I figured you were watching it. Which committee?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Glasgow City Council. I would ask that you please stand as we say the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will remain standing. I'll ask Councilmember Benel to lead us in our invocation. Terry?
Mr. Tony, prayer. Most gracious Father in heaven, we thank you for this day that you've blessed us with. Our Father, as we come to a close of a day, we look back and we give you thanks for all that you've blessed us with. We thank you, Father, that we've had a safe day in the city, that we've had our police department to be safe, and that firefighters and public works and everyone that works in our city, God, has done good today. We're grateful for their service. And tonight, Father, we ask you to bless this gathering of council and mayor and others in our audience, and help us, Father, to have good discussion. We're thankful, Father, for the freedoms in our country. As you bless us with, Father, and we pray, God, you'll instill within us responsibilities that we have to you above all, and then to each other, Father. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
May be seated. All right. Ms. April Russell is filling in in the clerk's position again tonight, so I will ask for you to call the roll, ma'am.
Kirk Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Shoemaker?
Benel?
Trigg? Put your microphone down. There you go.
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
All right. Thank you all very much for being here. We have lots to take care of tonight. Before we get started, we need to approve the agenda. On Thursday, you all got in the mail, your email, the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. To begin with, I will entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as our instructions for tonight. Is there a motion?
Motion.
From Councilman Neil. Is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Is there any discussion on the proposed agenda? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Like sign. So we will proceed based on the agenda that was sent out to you last Thursday. And I appreciate everybody looking over that, so we kind of know where we're going when we get here. And the first item of business that we need to do is to approve the minutes from the meeting we had back on February the 10th. You've had those in your possession as well, and I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the February the 10th meeting and move them into the record.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Ms. Kirkpatrick. And is there any discussion about the minutes as they were presented to you? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are into the record. Let's move forward with our agenda, and we've been trying to have department head meetings, not meetings, but department head presentations, so that everybody keeps up with where we're going. This works out really good because Kevin Myatt with Planning and Zoning was kind of scheduled to be up here, and he's got some exciting news that he kind of wants to talk to you about, about an event that's going to be coming up as well. So Kevin Myatt, thank you for being here tonight, sir, and kind of bring us up to date.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Mayor, for letting me speak. Just come before you, I am your Planning and Zoning Director, and I know that most of you know that what Planning and Zoning does, the commission that's there. Some of you may not know what we do. We are a joint city-county planning commission, so we represent all four legislative bodies: Glasgow, Barron County, Cave City, and Park City. And those representations are set by the census status. So you have five representatives from Glasgow, five representatives from Barron County, two from Cave City, and one from Park City. So it's equal representation with regard to population size. And what our task is, is we are set there to hold those public hearings, to hold those public meetings, to enforce your zoning classifications, to enforce your development plans, subdivision regs, those things that matter in that sense from a planning and zoning perspective. We also do long and short-range planning via the comprehensive plan that we are required to do by KRS-100. Much like you all, we are governed by KRS-100. That's our chapter specifically in planning and zoning. So no matter where you go across the state, regardless if it's Jefferson County or if it's Glasgow, you have and are required to have zoning classifications, subdivision regs, if you have a planning commission. Now, those can vary. Obviously, our rules may not be the same as Bowling Green's or the same as Cave City's even. So it's varied, and it's totally dependent on how the citizens of our community, as well as the council here, deems it to go forward. Having said that, and the reason why I'm here today, as the mayor's alluded to, we have, what, a public hearing, our public meeting coming up for an urban housing initiative. We've seen a lot of individuals come into our office, speaking on lots, that fall below the minimum threshold for zoning classifications. And they're predominantly in the older parts of our neighborhood, or our city, sorry. And those are some of the first lots that you'll ever see that were recorded in the clerk's office. Lot of those lots, you know, as we've always said in the building side of things, you know, everything has a lifespan, regardless of what it is. And homes are no different. Structures are no different. And what we're seeing in our offices is a lot of individuals may be inheriting property or taking over property, of which they haven't lived there at that specific property since they may have been children. That was their parents' or their grandparents' property. And they've moved on, have a life outside of just that property, don't have any intentions of living at that property. And they have a few things that they may want to do, whether that's sell it, renovate it, you know, tear it down, or they may be in a financial situation that it's back taxes or liens are applied to it, and they just want to get rid of it. A lot of times, those individuals will come to our office and say, what can we do with that? Well, our minimum classification in our residential zonings have square footages set in relation to the size of maybe not the structure, but the impervious area in relation to the lot size. So our lowest lot size that we have on rule or on file right now is 7,500 square feet. If you get into the R3 classification, it drops down to 6,500. But what we're seeing is we're seeing a lot of lots that are 5,000 square feet, 5,500, something like that, and they fall even below that minimum threshold. So if that home is ever destroyed, really, it couldn't be put back on there. And that's more of a state statute than it is our rule. The state statute says it's a non-conforming lot, meaning it doesn't even meet your minimums. So you can't expand by law in a non-conforming lot. You can't expand the home. So if I wanted to take the home off and say it's a 1,200-square-foot house, and I want to put a 1,400-square-foot house back on that 5,500-square-foot lot, I can't allow that to happen because the state statutes say it can't happen. You're expanding the non-conforming structure that's on that property. So what this housing initiative is, is for one, is to take inventory of those lots. Now, we won't have a specific number for that meeting, but it's also more of a think-tank type meeting. How can we think outside the box, maybe to help those individuals that have lots that fall below those thresholds, and give them an opportunity to have a potential to sell it, have potential to develop it, whatever they may feel like doing there, but under the confines of what we feel like as a city that meets that. Some of the things we're talking about is what's called flex house designs. And don't get me wrong, those type of designs are basically just a duplex, but that duplex sits on top of itself. It's just a two-story duplex. It doesn't sit side by side like you may see traditional structures. And those take up a larger footprint, larger impervious area. This takes up minimal lot area, reduces the impervious area in most cases, which that impervious area is your blacktops, your driveways, your roofs, anything that sheds water that doesn't go into the ground naturally and soaks up. So we have a lot of those lots in Glasgow. And this meeting is just a informative meeting, a meeting to take in and solicit comments from builders, property owners, investors, anybody that we could think of that has an interest in that and has an interest in seeing how Glasgow can go forward with residential development. And maybe not so much in the single-family style, but maybe in the multifamily style. So it provides an extra place for an individual to live at. And we're going to get into that discussion that night, and it's on February the 27th, which is Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30. If you would like to go to the Planning Commission's Facebook page, we have the notice obviously on there, but we also have just a sample architectural drawing of a structure that could potentially be used. Doesn't mean that it has to be used. It's just something to give those individuals that like to see visually what could be on that property. It's a really cool design. You know, this, what we call flex house design, still has one door, still has one front door. So it still looks like a single-family home, but it's a two-story home. Provides an additional living space, if you would say. So our Facebook page, Planning Commission Facebook page is, and it's a long acronym, but you know, we're the government, so we've got to have long acronyms, but it's JCCPC, stands for the Joint City-County Planning Commission of BC. So we'd love for you to come. It'll be here in the council chambers from 6:00 to 7:30. We'll have presentations on it. We'll show you kind of the differences in the style of homes that we're looking at in relation to the lot size and the home and structure size that may go on that lot, may be permitted. So do you all have any questions for me?
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I was in Nashville down there around Tennessee State University.
Yes, sir.
I think they did an urban initiative. So they have those new two-story homes. Is that your intention? Because they're on limited lot space.
Sure.
Which every city would be in. The older homes don't have as much space as the, you know, to meet the requirements.
Right.
And then they're maximizing out that space. So is that our intention? So let's just though Lewis Broadway between College and Maine, or College and McKenna, you know, those areas, those homes are stacked on top of each other, and I'm sure most of them don't meet. So would the family be grandfathered in to maximize the space that they have on their lot, and then the potential for one of these new flex-type-style homes? Because they're taller and they look like they go back deeper and some other things.
Yeah, they're a bit more of a shotgun style that you would see. Maybe typically between like 22 and 25 feet wide by about 50 or 60 feet long. That's typically what you would see in that. And that's very close to what we are proposing to have meetings on as well, in the same vein, almost.
Is there a template or something for the design of these homes out? I thought I took a picture of it. I was going to show it to you.
Well, we have just a sample one there. And that's something we would discuss at that meeting on Thursday night as well. You know, the intention for the Planning Commission, first intention for the Planning Commission is public health, safety, and welfare. That's our primary paramount goal, okay? After that, then we have to look at, does it change the neighborhood characteristics? Is it too much of a design that then alters the neighborhood in a great, you know, degree? Perfect example, and some that a lot of individuals don't know, is that of manufactured housing. So in the city limits, we have a city ordinance that says you cannot bring a manufactured home into the city limits of Glasgow unless two things are met. One, it's inside of a approved mobile home park or manufactured home park. Or two, you go before what's called the Glasgow Board of Adjustment. And their role, which I'm contracted to do, their staff for them, their role is to say, we can grant a manufactured home outside of an approved park as long as it doesn't, A, change the neighborhood characteristics, you know, and public health and safety, welfare is met. So an individual's not bringing home a manufactured home that doesn't have a B1 seal, you know, or hasn't been inspected by the state fire marshal, something that, you know, obviously the individual or the family that's living there has some safety. There has been some inspections done on it. So that board meets that. But to get back to what I was discussing there, you know, that's an ordinance that's set by the city here. This that we're talking about, this type of flex housing, is more stick-built as opposed to just a manufactured home. Now, there are modular homes out there that have an M seal, and those are building code requirements. And they are prefabricated in a factory somewhere, but they have been inspected by the Kentucky Building Code and the International Building Code. So when they come in, they're sitting on a permanent foundation. They're not sitting on any blocks, and they're fixed to the ground then at that point. And those are some of the structures that we would be willing to look at as well from the Planning Commission's side. But, you know, from a staff standpoint, we've seen a lot of individuals, regardless if they're property owners, or they've inherited it, or they're wanting to sell it, and we have developers out there, or businessmen, businesswomen out there that want to maybe tear that home down. It may be blighted or distressed, and they want to tear it down, and then they say, well, I'd like, you know, really not any money in it to just put a single-family home there. I'd like to put a duplex there. Well, you know, the state law won't allow me to allow you to have a duplex there. You don't have enough square footage by our zoning ordinance. So we're trying to figure out a way to make that work that gives those individuals another different opportunity, you know, to either maximize their property or be able to sell that property, somebody who wants to maximize that while providing an additional living space. Having said all of that, I know we've talked about in the past, we've talked about HUD housing and those type of things. These would be open. You, as a private citizen, you build it. You can rent it to whoever you want to. Doesn't change that. That's not changed. That narrative has not changed. So it's still open to anybody that wants to build, that wants to maybe redevelop, you know, their lots that they may have inherited or whatnot. So we're just trying to provide that for the citizens, you know, an additional type of development, rather than just your stick-built, I don't have anything I can do with this, so I'm just going to let the home sit there and stay, and maybe I don't have anybody rent it, and then all of a sudden, we have blighted housing, and you have reduction in property values and things like that. So it gives them another avenue to be able to either sell it or develop it. It's what we're looking at.
Let's be meeting the open, ask questions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's a, yes, it's a public meeting to solicit any comments, any questions. This is the perfect time. So this is what the Planning Commission does on your all's behalf. We are your legislative arm, essentially. So we hold all of these meetings. We will hold eventually a public hearing, which is a testimony that will be sworn in, all of that. And then we forward our findings to you all for final approval. But we do all the essential legwork for you all. I would highly recommend you come to it because obviously it's going to come to you, you know, if it gets off the ground, so that you're well-informed, you're educated on the decision that's coming before you.
Is a state regulation, though, on the size, what you have now, is that a process to turn that over? If you wanted to do that, is it a year long, two years, six months?
Well, that's a good question. So the state statute doesn't tell you exactly what your minimum lot sizes are going to be. You can make that up as you want, okay? It just says if you're going to have zoning, you have to have minimum lot sizes set. So Glasgow has determined that, you know, 7,500 square feet is typically outside of one zoning classification. That is your lowest square footage per lot, okay? Now, to get that changed, it's called a text amendment. So you've got to hold a public hearing from the Planning Commission level, multiple meetings for that, and then that language, whatever it is to be changed, gets changed. It gets forwarded to you all for two readings, obviously, for it to become an ordinance by law. That's usually, I'll just be honest with you, that's usually about a five-month process from start to finish, and that's just for us to hold, one, a public meeting, then, two, a public hearing, which by law, we're required to notify the public X amount of days, that kind of stuff. Then we meet once a month as a planning commission. We have to approve our minutes the next month, and then it's forwarded to you all for final recommendation. So your responsibility is to either approve it or deny.
So it's local?
It stays local, yeah.
If that were to happen, would that apply to any lot in the city? I mean, is it, you know?
It would apply to that specific zoning classification that we would be talking about. So we have roughly 10 zoning classifications, ranging from residential to commercial to industrial, sprinkled in with public and agricultural zoning classifications. And each side, and each, within each one of those classifications, there's multiple classifications inside of that. May sound difficult or sound, but it is not. If you pull up our zoning ordinance on the Planning Commission's website, it's very easy read. It's not a John Grissom novel, but it's a very easy read. So, but you'll get all the info that you need out of it. And, you know, if there are changes that need to be made, that's the Planning Commission's, you know, responsibility to make those changes as the citizens and as the council deems it necessary.
Good discussion. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
So like, any lot, like same thing, I have a lot.
Sure.
So I can tell you my square footage, and you can tell me how big a house or duplex, whatever I can put in it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. We have that ability. We have all of that mapping in our office. If you go on our website, while we don't have individual lots shown on there, we do have the zoning classification. So you know exactly where you're at with an address or a parcel number. I can give you the very specifics on what you can do with it. Yes, sir?
I might have missed this. You might have already said it, but 7,500 square feet lot size, if there was, if I acquired through somehow.
Sure.
A house there that had 1,200 square feet.
Yeah.
I needed to get rid of it, tore down, it's too old. I couldn't downsize. I know I couldn't expand, but I couldn't down-
You can downsize.
You can.
You can downsize. So if the, you know, if you've got 5,000 square foot and you've got a 1,000-square-foot home on there, and you say, hey, I'm going to put a 900-square-foot structure back on here, the state statute says that, one, you can't make it any larger, so you're meeting that. Two, you can't expand any closer to the property lines than what that structure was, because you may be, say you're two foot off the property line. Well, our zoning ordinance says you've got to be 10 feet. So you can still stay at that two foot, but you can't get any closer. So you can go down, but the state statute says you can't expand it in any shape or form.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really like the fact that, one of the exciting things about this, we have, through the good works of our co-enforcement officer, Ms. Cheryl Peña, we have a lot of properties that get dilapidated in the middle of a neighborhood. They have to be torn down. A lot of times, a lien goes against them to try to clean up a blighted area in the middle of a subdivision or middle of a neighborhood. With this, there's, things can be put back because all of a sudden, something that didn't meet the code now will meet the code with this new development.
Sure. Absolutely.
There may be some good places to maybe put these that have been a blight in the neighborhood.
Right. Yep, that's the goal.
And Kevin, you said the meeting is here?
It's here in the council chambers. Yes, ma'am. Thursday, February 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30. Well, if we got to go longer, we go longer, but starting at 6:00 p.m.
All right, Kevin. Thank you. And I would encourage you all to go on to the website and see this picture of this prototype house that's on there, and a lot more good information. Thank you. I think we'll see some really good things happen with this development. All right, we're going to go now and move into some old business. Rich, we've got an order to, a municipal order to deal with here.
On order of the mayor, Victoria Hunley is hereby reappointed to serve as community member of the Entertain Glasgow Committee. The appointment is a one-year term, expiring February 28, 2026. Adopted pursuant to law, today's date.
All right. Ms. Hunley has been on this Entertain Glasgow Committee before, but I will entertain a motion to approve her being reappointed.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion and the second. Is there a discussion on Victoria Hunley being reappointed to Entertain Glasgow? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. So Ms. Victoria is back on again. This is a one-year term for Entertain Glasgow. All right, let's move to new business. The, and she is not here, but if she were here, this would be the last official meeting of Mona Simmons as being the city clerk. So we are going to recognize Mona this Friday, February 28th, from noon until 1:00, with a reception in this very room to celebrate her years of service to the city of Glasgow. I believe my note right here says eight, is it 18 years? 18 years that she has served the city, and we're going to be honoring her with this particular retirement reception, noon until 1:00 on this Friday. But we can't move forward without a city clerk. And so we're going to move forward right now. Rich, you want to talk about the next order?
Yes, sir. On order of the mayor, effective March 1 of 2025, Danielle Cashin is hereby appointed to the city of Glasgow, not-elected city officer position of city clerk. This municipal order is adopted pursuant to law and approved by the council today's date.
Okay, so we have a motion, or we actually have an order. I would take, entertain a motion to approve this order to appoint Danielle Cashin as the city clerk. Motion, Norris. Okay, is there a second?
Second, Trigg.
Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. And just like that, we're going to swear her in. So Danielle, if you want to move forward here, you don't have long to celebrate. As long as you're the clerk, you'll never do it the way April wants it done. Sorry about that. So here we are. You have been in this business before. Tell everybody about you serving as a city clerk before.
Where I came from before was Marion, Kentucky, and we were a lot smaller there. So we had to know everybody's jobs. So I did some of the city clerk duties there before I came.
Spend a lot of time, you know, with Mona and a lot of things, and she's got a lot of training to do. Now, your daughter is back here. Do you want her to come up here and stand while I always swear you in? I'm going to do the oath right here. This is Danny. Hi, Danny. So I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and listen to what I'm about to say, okay? I, Danielle Cashin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of this Commonwealth and the Constitution of the United States, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of city clerk for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I, being a citizen of this United States, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God. Do you agree with what I just read?
I do.
Well, congratulations. We're going to sign. Sign right here. There's two copies right there, so we can have it on record right there. And, because I can tell you, I know, I learned from working with Mona that the city clerk's mad about things you don't get signed. So we got to get it signed correctly. All right? Congratulations. And then you'll be the next, when is the next council meeting?
Fourth?
March 10th.
March 10th will be.
Recognize as what?
This is my last one.
Your last meeting as a template.
Your last meeting as a template.
Quit. Now I don't want it.
Next item is a zoning ordinance. This is a ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-four fifty-five New Bowling Green Road here in Glasgow, containing four-point-four-three-four acres, more or less, from the I-one light industrial district to a B-three highway service business district classification. It appearing that Brad Miles, applicant for and on behalf of the owner, Newcombe Oil, has requested a zoning change for the property located at twenty-four fifty-five New Bowling Green Road in Glasgow, containing four-point-four-three-four acres, more or less, from I-one light industrial district to B-three highway service business district classification. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this proposed zoning change was held on January twenty-first of this year by the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-one to B-three. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council and are hereby accepted and adopted by the council and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now, the order hereby ordained by the city is follows. Section one, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section two, the property located at twenty-four fifty-five New Bowling Green Road, containing four-point-four-three-four acres, shall be changed from the I-one classification to the B-three classification. The real property covered by this ordinance is described in Exhibit A attached here, too. Section three, all future development of the property shall comply with the requirements of the development plan ordinance adopted by the council December thirty, nineteen-ninety-one. Lastly, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and you all have had the particulars in your packet since Thursday. At this time, I would consider a motion that we pass on first reading, this rezoning ordinance.
Motion, Maniel.
Is there a second?
Second.
From Councilman Neil. All right, we have a motion and a second, which means we can get it up on the floor and discuss it. Is there any discussion about this particular ordinance of rezoning? All right, there being none, I will ask that all of those in favor of passing first reading of this ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. And first reading of the ordinance has passed.
Next item, mayor, is an ordinance establishing an entertainment destination center.
Mayor Ross, having had opportunity to review the current version of the ordinance since before us tonight, and after speaking with Mrs. April Russell, Police Chief Guy Howie, and City Attorney Rich Alexander, it's my view that there are some issues that need to be cleaned up in this ordinance before we formally consider passing it. Therefore, at this time, I would like to make a motion to this body that the first reading of this ordinance be passed to the next council meeting, which is March the tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Further during the discussion on my motion tonight, I would ask that we hear from Mrs. April Russell, so that she can address any questions that the council may have at this time concerning the proposed ordinance.
All right, but to do that, we need to have a motion on the floor to delay this and a second, and then we'll get to April in discussion. So, I entertain a motion that we, well, I mean, Terry, that was your motion, okay?
Yes, yes.
So, all we need is a second.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so, motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying.
Got a discussion, got a discussion.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. Discussion is gonna be where Ms. Russell is going to talk about the specifics of that. So, do you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, um, this is a draft of the rules. Um, I don't think they over there have that draft of the rules. Uh, we've been working on this for a while, several months. It's an entertainment destination center. It is basically where, and what it's for is for economic development and tourism is what it, and it also helps control more and puts more rules on the use of alcohol in the area. You have a map, and I think you guys got the map also in the ordinance. The city would come together, we would have to apply for our license from the state to allow people to walk around while having an alcoholic drink in their hand. To be able to do that, they have to have a cup that is approved by the city from the restaurant that has an ABC license already. The map is the only place, there's signs at the end where you can't go past with your alcoholic drink. This is only during, the hours we originally put on it is Thursday and Friday from five to midnight, and then on Saturday from eleven to midnight. After speaking with some people in other areas, they don't suggest we do it till midnight, we suggest nine or ten o'clock that we shut that off. It allows people, and I'll tell you the benefits of it, it allows people to come downtown, and it encourages them to walk around and explore your downtown more. On a nice, pretty Saturday, you have the ability for a place like Bluegrass Vineyard or Yanceys to come out to our area, to one of the approved. Bluegrass Vineyard and Yanceys are breweries, and so they are exempt, they're Kentucky proud. So, they could come to a business and set up and sell the alcohol there, as long as it was in an approved cup and they stayed within the mapped area. Is there any questions? And it's probably easier for me to answer questions than to explain the whole.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Is the entertainment, sorry, the EDC license different from the ABC license?
It is. The city of Glasgow has the EDC license, and then we have a agreement with each ABC-licensed business within that area for them to abide by the rules of the EDC.
So, each establishment doesn't have to go and get a new license?
No. They just have to have an agreement with the city.
Okay. Another question. Where it says provides adequate, adequate security for the common area, does each establishment have to provide their own security, or is that something that the Glasgow Police Department just?
So, typically, if you have your ABC license, you have to already be in control of your area. So, it wouldn't be any different than that.
Okay. Where it says the city shall have the authority through executive orders to promulgate and enforce further rules and regulations pertaining, pertaining to the activities within the EDC. My question on that was, it says different activities, would different activities have different rules? I wasn't aware of what that meant.
My interpretation is yes, that if the city, if you applied to have a, if you were gonna have a special event and there need to be extra rules for it, that the city could make those, an ABC license.
Who's the "we" that's been working on this?
Um, I've been in there, Stephanie, Chief Howie, the Wagners have been here, Rich has been in there, Nick, McLean, Kevin.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes.
Um, if we move forward, can this be revoked at a later time if we see it doesn't, it's not working out?
Yeah, I'm sure anything we apply for, we spoke with them today, if you apply for a license, you can ask for that license to be taken, or.
So, we're not set in like?
Forever, no. Okay.
Councilwoman, or Councilwoman, I would say, too, that if, if the council decided they wanted to revoke the entertainment district, that caused the state to revoke the.
Right.
Their licensure, so that, that would be a mechanism as well.
The city has to meet all the requirements for the state license. And I, I know, I had talked to some of you guys today, and the question has been asked several times, can you walk into a restaurant, another store with your drink? And the answer is, as of July one, twenty-twenty-four, a business can choose. If you choose, if the business chooses to allow you to walk in, you can. If they don't, some businesses don't want you to bring any food or drink in, and if that's the case, they just have to post that. That's up to them.
I have one more question, please.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know we have, or someone has set some boundaries.
We have.
Can those boundaries be moved later on, or does it have to be?
Boundaries can be moved, but every time we do anything, it'd have to go back through the state, because that's who our permits with.
So, does it have to be a certain amount of boundary? I guess, square footage, or like, can it mileage, like, how does that work?
It has to be within, so, it has to include a, it's in the KAR, it has to include, like, a tourist spot, or, so you've got the cultural center, you've got the plaza, it has to be around that area.
And this is specifically to promote economic growth in our downtown area, correct?
Economic and tourism, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I understand that Kevin has prepared a map?
He does, and I think they all got a copy of it.
Okay, you all have seen the map, in other words.
And so, the map includes all the way down to AJ's and the House of Vintage. We're trying to help that area also, so that we can include them.
All right, other questions?
I, I think I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can an establishment that doesn't want to partake in this, do they have to?
They do not have to. The, the cups are sold, you have to have an agreement with the city to participate. And the cups are sold by Clark Beverage, or that is how the others do it, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how we do it. They offer a thousand dollars to get you started, you can use that thousand dollars however you choose, 'cause you have to have a logo, you have to buy the case. So, the restaurants can buy the cases from Clark Beverage, and that's where they get those cups. Some cities have chose to give the restaurants their first case of cups, and some don't. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, and I'm not sure, April or Kevin. The word adjacent in this.
Yes.
When you look at the map, and, and I'm going down West Main Street to what will be the future home of the farmer's markets.
Yes, use your voice.
Sorry, um, to the future side of the farmer's market going down West Main. Would adjacent mean the parking lot of the post office? Or when those signs are posted at the edge of that lot? It, the word adjacent throws me, sharing a common side, so can I go over into the parking lot of the post office with my cup? Because it's adjacent.
I did ask this question today, and the way it was told to me, it means the sidewalks, adjacent to the roadway, not adjacent to the property line.
Adjacent to the sidewalks.
Along with the roadway and the sidewalks.
And the other question is, I looked at some entertainment districts in some other locations, and in particular, the one I looked at in Bowling Green, they have a section in their ordinance about punishment if you violate any of the things that are outlined in that. Do we have anything set, or are we just gonna follow the, the standard rules for AI and so on?
So, are you talking about for the restaurants, or are you talking about?
Somebody out on the street. If they're able to take this cup out of the restaurant, and, and they leave one restaurant, and they're walking down the street, and they're.
It's a Chief Howie question.
Okay. Well, all of those kinds of things, and as far as the enforcement, just follow standard rules?
Ma'am, it'll be a common sense approach. If they walk outside of the entertainment district with the cup, and they're approached by officers, and they tell them to dump it, then they'll, they'll dump it. It's gonna be, like I said, a common sense approach. If they're all walking out to go to their car to refill the cups with the intent to come back in, then that's not gonna be allowed. If, if they're intoxicated to the point that they're causing a disturbance, they're gonna be arrested under KRS.
Thank you. I have a question for our attorney. Are we, is there any way that we could have a liability with this when it comes to?
So, the other cities with the agreement with the, with the restaurants, and the city, they ask each restaurant to add the city of Glasgow onto their insurance?
But to, but to answer your question, I mean, I think yes is the answer to that. I mean, like anything, if you establish a program, you've got a duty as a property owner, as a, as a city, to act responsibly with your program, and if something were to happen, I guess there's a scenario out there that, that there could be some liability. For instance, if it, if it wasn't properly policed the way that it should, you know, but, but there should be liability insurance in place to cover most of it.
I talked to several others, and they said that they did not have an increase in their PIs.
I'm worried about traffic, and I, I don't wanna put the city in a situation to where.
Sure, of course. It already happens now.
I know.
I think.
That was my question. I, you know, I've come down here for several things on the square, and what, I see people walking around with a drink in their hand, whether it's coming out of Yanceys, or whether they bought it out of a barrel over here in front of the national, or City Hall here, and you're saying, but this is, what is the big difference between doing that, what you're already doing?
So, things like the concerts we host, Sip Shop and Shole, they get their own private license, so they get a license just for that day, just for that event. When you do that, you can, anybody can serve, there's really no rules or regulations, you don't have to be star certified, as long as you have that license, you can order the alcohol and sell it. Now, whenever, if, if this goes forward, whenever we have those events on this square, the police can say, you know, it's gonna have to be in that cup. So, if it's not, if they're walking around with a can of beer, that's not in the cup, so therefore, they're not supposed to have that. Now, you can't tell if they brought a cooler in with a six-pack in it, because you can't tell where it came from.
Don't have it in the?
You don't have it in the cup, now they can ask and make you forward. Is that correct? Is that a good explanation?
No matter what drink you have, it's gonna have to be in that cup when you walk out of the.
Out of establishment, you have to have, yeah, yeah. And I'd say to my fellow council members, I mean, I support the entertainment district designation, the EDC, but I feel that this ordinance, that we need to pass on it tonight, because you've seen all the questions we've had, we need to clean it up. I think it's too casual right now. We need to tighten up, we talk about some hours, we talk about adjacent, we talk about the fines, we talk about incorporating these rules that were passed around. I think all this needs to go in our ordinance, so that, you know, there are no questions relating to the enforcement to it, and, you know, I think that, you know, this is positive for the downtown activities, and it's a better way to control, and, but we need to get there, though, with a good mechanism. We don't need to leave a lot of, I think this is the way it is, I hope this is the way it is, and we not know, and we have an incident that happens. Let's make it good for everyone, and that's the reason for passing on this, so that the city attorney and Mrs. Russell and others involved can, can clean this up, and we can look at a clean copy. You've heard the discussion tonight, so I'd hope that those that were in the first discussion on it would take this information and come back to us. We are not looking to begin this until July one.
Yes, because we had, there is some vegetarian items with it, we have to put signage and logos, things to that nature, so we wanted to make sure we gave it enough time.
Sure.
And I did learn today that restaurants that have an ABC license within the EDC can bring out a cart or a mobile, as long as they have permission from wherever it is, they're gonna set that, so that, that really does pertain to, it, it helps those restaurants and those establishments come out of their, their brick and mortar.
I think, you know, this would help our residents that, not residents, our restaurants, and our residents, too, but our restaurants that have the license, so when we have the events, and when they have these times of day, that they can sell more, and it can be controlled better, and where it's benefiting them, because they're the folks in our downtown area that need to benefit from this.
Yes, and I encourage people to walk around and explore more.
Yeah, I just would like to see it, some more rules and tighten up on it than what's. Yeah, I just would like to see it, some more rules and tighten up on it than what's in this ordinance right now.
I'd ask April.
April, sorry.
Yes?
Did you say that the group had discussed of changing the hours from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM?
They haven't. I just heard that today and knew that that would be something they would be interested in, that the others really don't go all the way to midnight with that.
And I'd ask April to come up with a list of some cities that this is already in operation successfully. You want to share those?
I can. These are the ones I came up with. I don't know that it is complete list. Bowling Green, Paducah, Danville, Owensboro, Louisville, Lexington, Morehead, Covington, Maysville, Midway, Bellevue, Somerset, Corbin, Camp Landing, the CVG Airport, Frankfurt, Hodgenville, Elizabethtown, Richmond, Winchester, Ashland, Maysville, Versailles, Fort Thomas, and Elkhorn City.
So some, a lot of different sizes of cities in there that are already doing this and taking advantage of it. I think that's something that we kind of need, and plus, we can talk to some of those and see how successful they are. And I know with McLean being here, representing tourism, I'm sure that you have seen the benefits of this in many communities here in the state as well.
Absolutely.
We've had a discussion, but we're still open for discussion right now before I call the question. Any more discussion on this particular issue?
I have another one, sorry. McLean, you probably can answer this. Are most of the districts around that timeframe?
Um, I think it was, issue was Western students?
Bowling actually starts at 11:00 AM, because the businesses, they started it just on the weekend, and the businesses ask them to expand it, and then they ask them to start it at 11:00 AM every day. So now they do it every day of the week. They ask them to start it at 11:00, because that's when most of them opened.
So we, I think our timeframe probably needs to be looked at.
We can look at that.
Our start's at 5:00?
Yes.
So are we going to change the time? I mean, what's going to?
We can look at it, and I can pull some numbers from other places, and we can decide.
I think that would be a good idea.
Sure.
All right, good discussion. Is there other discussion right now? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor of passing this first vote on this ordinance down to the next meeting, which is the 10th day of March, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, we're pushing it down to then, and like I said, gives us a whole lot to, I'm glad we're doing this, so we can think about it before, and fix some of these things before it goes into law, if in fact it does. All right?
Next item is a budget ordinance, amending ordinance number 2024-3049, the annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, by appropriating from the unappropriated general fund $280,000 towards the construction of a farmer's market, and to transfer from the general fund expense account to another general fund expense account $500,000 for construction materials, and to receive bond proceeds of $5,398,885 for American Legion Park and Pool, and to receive $100,000 federal grant monies, and to appropriate this $100,000 for green infrastructure stormwater analysis. Be hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that its annual budget for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 is amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund, the sum of $280,000 is to be transferred to the administrative department contractual improvements account for construction of the farmer's market. Section 2, there is hereby transferred $500,000 from the administrative grants and subsidies account to the administrative contractual improvements account for construction on the farmer's market. Section 3, there is hereby received $5,398,885 into the general fund parks and recreation bond proceeds account, and to the parks and recreation pool account for construction of the park and the pool facilities. Section 4, there is hereby received $100,000 into the general fund street department federal monies account for green infrastructure stormwater analysis. Section 5, there is hereby transferred $100,000 from the unappropriated general fund street department contractual improvements account for green infrastructure stormwater analysis. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the first reading of this ordinance. We, for those of you all who are new, we have to sometimes amend the budget, because we get further into the budget year, and expenses change, or something came up that we needed to move some money around, so that's what this does. But before we get to the discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we pass the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Benio.
Is there a second?
Norris.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, a discussion on this particular amendment, amending the fiscal budget that we passed back in July.
I guess I would like just a little bit more information budget-wise, you know, this is, what, our third or fourth meeting on here, and I'm going to vote yes or no for this, and really not knowing where I'm, what line, where it's coming from, where it's, you know, it tells me where it's going, but is this all out of the, and I went to the finance twice, and I've got this with me, is this coming out of the general fund, is where that's transferring out of, the money?
Honey, Stephanie can correct me if I'm wrong, but the monies will go into the general fund, and then transfer out of the general fund to these specific?
Okay, it's coming from where?
Well, you've got grant monies.
That's why I wondered, is it 280 a grant from the?
This is, no, this is money in the general fund that we haven't appropriated for anything else.
It would be in that top line, that budget that you had, so you'd be taking 280 out of that for the?
The farmer's market.
Farmer's market, yeah. Yeah, so I'm just trying to get a handle on this. I've seen work with some budgets before, but I'm just, this is all new, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. And so it's got, everything's coming out of that general fund that we're transferring out of. And is this typically where the general fund is at at this time of, you know, fiscal year ends June 30th, is that correct?
It's correct.
So, I mean, we typically, is that about where we normally set it, where the general fund is now, or is it just every year?
Well, I mean, I'll speak from the finance committee. You know, our general fund this year, we've already spent a lot of money in the general fund. And the reason we spend a lot of money in the general fund is, you know, we bought quite a bit of equipment. So the balance that you have on that sheet from our meeting the other night, I mean, we show a surplus in our general fund right now. And so with the receipt of our avalerum tax, and then our occupational license fee, you know, we've shown a really good surplus, but we've got a lot of activity going on within this budget that we approved. And so we do have monies available to meet this need for the construction at the farmer's market. We have money, if you look at the budget, there's budgeted numbers here that we approved for the construction of the farmer's market. What we're asking now is to move money now because of a cost overrun on that project as we're beginning it, that we've got to move money now to sustain that.
I understand the moving of the money. I just, you know, I'm just, again, the 280, what is the cost of that farmer's market? I mean, what, is this, you say it's over, kind of, this is why you need to move this money?
I think, Mayor, if we could have Stephanie come to the podium.
Just have her come on up here, because?
Roughly, I'm not asking for a, you know, I know how buildings change daily, and by the month, and change orders, but?
So was the grant for $500,000?
$250,000. The whole project is 779 at this point, but there will be a change order. We just, this weekend, as they were moving dirt, ran across something else that will have to be done, so there will be a change order coming. But right now, it's 779,000.
Is a lot of that grant money that's paying for that?
250,000 is grant money, and then we have two or three other little grant monies that are coming our way also, small.
So what is the difference between the general fund and subsides account?
Your grants and subsidies accounts, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
The grants and subsidies account is inside your general fund. So your general fund is a fund, we had several different funds, and, but your grants and subsidies account is inside the general fund. We've been in audit, Randy's asked about coming by and sitting down and explaining some things, we just haven't gotten there yet. Hopefully, this audit will be done in another two or three weeks, and then we'll have more time to sit down and have, if you would like to also, if you all just notify me of when you can come.
I just like to kind of, not be up here like a sitting duck and not know what I'm yessing to here, so I'd like to have an understanding of things. And I do understand some budget, I have a, you know, I've been some background with some budgeting things, and when I'm transferring funds, I usually like to, you know, know, is that typically kind of, you know, is that account kind of where it normally at at this time before you end up in your taxes?
Every year, it's different, it depends on the projects that you have, that you're going to do out of that account or out of that fund. So GASB accounting calls for different, when you move money, it calls for budget amendments and different appropriations to be done of that when you do it. So we're just, we're following GASB accounting laws.
That, do you think the 280 will kind of, at this point, take care of the?
At this point, I just, just don't know what else is going to come.
I understand, construction.
Right.
It's really interesting, if you've ever owned your own business or done things different than government accounting and like what the city does, this GASB is just totally different, the way that you have to go out and wherever you get the money from, you got to say where you got it, where you put it, and you kind of, you have to know where it is, and it's really, I encourage you to go up there and learn more about that, because it is different than like business accounting or running QuickBooks or something like that.
Well, you know, if, what little we have to do with the budget or say as far as transferring or approving budgets, you know, the more we, I think any of us can know about this, I'd feel better about voting however I'm voting on any of this. And, you know, maybe once every couple of months, there's a budget spreadsheet in here that we could look at and just say, well, I wonder what happened to that account, or you know, we could ask some questions, or at least, you know, ask Henry or something, see what's going on to kind of keep things, because I think we are supposed to be responsible for that in our, what we're setting up here for, so.
Your finance committee gets a report every meeting?
Yeah.
And ask. You'll be getting a report next month in your meeting, too.
I think it would be helpful for anybody that's sitting up here, so.
I mean, just as a comparison purposes, and I'll be brief with this, last March, you know, we were running a surplus of about 1.2 million in general fund, and right now, our general fund surplus running through first part of February, I know there's not the same dates, but we're running about $5 million surplus.
Because that would be, because, I mean, that's a pretty big chunk. Have we collected a lot more taxes? That kind of stems my interest of what, how do we get through before we?
You've had, you've had a lot more, you know, as Nick was here the other day, and spoke to us about the occupational license fee, that we've seen a nice increase in that line item there. And we could go back, though, Randy, you'd go back, though, and look to see what's all in those numbers, and that's why it's hard to sit here right now, that's why I'm not saying comparing apples to apples. We're not right now, because there could be some other expenditures that we had in the first half of that prior budget. So that's why the finance committee meetings are really important, you know, talking about surplus. And also, everybody's got to be aware, if we say we got a surplus today, and we had some expenditures that we've already budgeted for, but not yet, that we haven't paid yet, then that would change that surplus dramatically.
Yeah, that's probably one of the biggest differences, because we've got, a good part of that $5 million is things we haven't spent yet, but are budgeted for.
Yeah, there's a lot of, the timing issue is really, really critical to this, yeah.
Is what you're speaking of, Terry, including that $5 million bond?
No.
No?
Just purely revenue, yeah.
Income.
Yeah, but it's, all of us, again, I want to reiterate, is all of us need to be aware, you know, when we approve a budget, that's a forecast of where we think we're going to be, and then there's a lot of timing that goes into that. The two items that we have, revenue sources that we know are consistent for us, is the occupational license fee and the avalerum tax. And those are the, I mean, those are the, that's 60% of the general fund. I mean, that's more than 60%.
It's more than 60.
Yeah, so those two items are a large component of the revenue, and we, and those lag occasionally, but we also have got expenses for police and fire and public works and, you know, other programming going on. I mean, we got, you know, expenditures, you know, from every department, so it still relates to a timing issue. So we can't look at the number I just quoted to you, saying where we are today, or where we're back middle part of this month, and saying, oh, we're in great shape. Well, we are in good shape through that time period, and then we would look at that, you know, every time we have a discussion. But this is a, you know, to move us forward with the farmer's market, to, you know, to continue the completion of that project, you know, this, we have funds available to do that.
We have to amend the budget to put it in the right part to use it.
Right.
Right.
All right?
Any more questions?
Got the people that can answer them up here. If not, we have a motion and a second. I will call the question. All in favor of passing the first reading of this budget amendment ordinance, indicate by saying aye. Opposition, indicate by saying aye. Okay, if first reading passes unanimously. Okay, I, I'm down to the announcement portion right here, where we just want to remind everybody, if you haven't signed up for the text alerts, it's really handy to have those text alerts, particularly when you've got schools that might be out, and bus routes that are changing, or certain parts of the city's operation that are changing weatherwise, be sure that you're on the, sign up by going to the City of Glasgow website and get on those text alerts, because they're, they sure point me in the right direction, for sure. I look forward to that. And the next council meeting is going to be on Monday, March 10, at 6 o'clock, right here in the Luska Jtwai Municipal Building Council chambers. And with that being said, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all so much for being here.